Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Let's try that again. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Yeah, it's a beautiful Tuesday morning. A little fog out there, not too bad. And thank the Lord for a little rain because the pollen kind of got knocked down. Amen. All right, this is a regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners Court, March 25th, 2025. It's about 9:07, according to what I've got. Call this meeting to order. Let the record show that Commissioners Carbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire, Commissioner Clark are in attendance today. We have a quorum, and we do have business for the court. So if you would all rise, Lee is going to lead us in the pledges, and the Sheriff's is going to lead us in the implications.
Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Pray freely, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity we have to come together as government, get a government and make decisions, Lord. And I just ask that you be with the judges and commissioners as we go through this agenda today and give them the wisdom, Lord, to do the things that you would have them do. And, Lord, talk things that we accomplish that are good. We give you the glory, the honor and the glory, Lord. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for sending your Son to die on the cross so that we all have a chance to be with you in heaven if we do your will. Lord, I want to also ask a special blessing on all the organizations that have volunteers to do the work around here to keep the kids safe, to keep the kids in agriculture going, Lord. And, Lord, it's Dispatcher Week. I thank you for the dispatchers throughout the country, Lord. And, Lord, just bless every one of them and keep them safe. And, Lord, be with all the county employees, Lord, and thank you for their dedication, dedication to the jobs that they do. Forgive us when we fall short, Lord, in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. All righty. Item number four on our agenda today is notices and proclamations. And we actually have two proclamations this morning. And both of them are pretty much my favorites, but especially one because it deals with the children. Also, Jason Bowen, are you here? Jason, there you are. You're hiding back here behind Ricky Brown. Hard to see you. Mr. Zimmerman came with you today from Texas A&amp;M. Okay, all righty. So first things first, proclamation acknowledging April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Y'all come on up. See Dr. Arnold? There's Cindy. Okay, we're good.
We're not protesting.
I don't mind.
We're not protesting. Just in case you didn't know.
It's my favorite time of year because at last I'm finally taller than somebody. And this proclamation declaring April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas child abuse is a major cause of preventable violence and death among children in Liberty County. It is an ever-increasing problem in today's society. It warrants the heightened awareness among this county's population. And whereas child abuse can take the form of physical abuse, sexual abuse, and/or neglect, whereas all citizens can help stop child abuse in Liberty County by being concerned about the health and safety of our neighborhood children by calling 1-800-252-5400. Again, that number.
1-800-252-5400.
1-800-252-5400, okay. To report suspected child abuse, National Child Abuse Prevention Month is a time to make their struggle our own and reaffirm a simple truth that carries for the most vulnerable in our society must always be our first concern. Whereas we commend all the agencies of Liberty County who work, we do tireless prevent child abuse and care for the victims of child abuse. Now therefore being resolved, Commissioners Court of Liberty County does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in support of child abuse victims and of those who help raise awareness in order to stop the senseless violence within our communities. Sign this date, and it is your ultimate guarantee. Let's see if you want to introduce everybody. And so, yeah, if there's folks out there that need them.
This is our Liberty County Child Welfare Board. We're all volunteers, no pay, just do it from our heart. We have Josh Fitzgerald and Mandy Dalton. She is a CPS supervisor over multiple counties. How many counties do you cover right now for her? Four counties. So she's spread pretty thin. So we appreciate your time and you being here. We have Dr. David Arnold. We have Nikki Taylor, Donna Aver, Cindy Abcher. And we just appreciate all the help that we get from the county and from our community.
We appreciate y'all.
We appreciate you.
We're really good.
Thank you.
Don't give them a hand.
We work.
We work.
We just think it's a fun stuff.
It's a resolution proclaiming April 13th through 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunicators' Week in the Gulf Coast Regional 911 Emergency Telecommunications District. And y'all know what that means. Our dispatchers, we, we love them, don't we, Sheriff? Every day. Whereas emergencies that require police fire and emergency medical services can occur anytime. And whereas when these emergencies occur, the public will often dial 911. Whereas the telecommunicators employed at the 23 Public Safety Answering Points located in the 8th County Gulf Coast Regional 911 Emergency Communications District Program Region answer those calls for assistance and serve as the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas the safety of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics that serve our citizens is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who use the 911 system. Whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in this past year. Whereas October 9th, 1991, the Congress of the United States proclaimed the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators' Week. That was passed and approved by the Board of Managers of the Gulf Coast Regional 911 Emergency Communications District on the 21st day of January in 2025. So let it be resolved that this is the week for the telecommunicators and thank them for all the service they do. Sheriff, I agree with you. That's a, that's a tough job. And it's 24/7. So just like owning a dairy, just because it's Christmas Day, the cows still have to go through the milking machine, right? It's, it's rough. It is. It, I know the, the 911 Emergency District with HGAC, you know, we support all of this. And every year, I know when, a while back, some of the funds went to the state and we pretty much requested that we stopped doing that. And it goes to the 911 Regional, which is HGAC, which is y'all, okay? When they're talking about eight counties in the region, you know, that's, this is part of it. So that's why we have better service. And it, it can only get better, Sheriff. It just, as soon as the technology catches up with what we're capable of, and when you push 911, maybe one day it'll tell exactly where you are, you know? That's it, okay? If y'all hadn't noticed, a lot of people don't use house phones any longer. I don't. Dwayne, do you have a house phone? Nope. See there?
I do.
Well, yeah.
Rotary dial.
Okay, rotary dial, okay. But, you know, that's just it. A lot of folks don't do that anymore. So when you call into 911, it has to peg you, or pin you, rather. And then it comes a question of what jurisdiction are you under. I called 911 for a guy that was definitely impaired in his driving that was ahead of me. And I was in no man's land, Sheriff. It was off of a farm road, I think 905, up in San Jacinto County. But I wasn't sure if I was San Jacinto County or Walker County yet. And so I got sent to the dispatcher for Walker County. And they said, no, you're about a mile away from our jurisdiction. Because they had a way to track me. And so they called San Jacinto County and they, but they in turn dispatched three DPS officers and picked him up when he hit the main road on Highway 190 going into Walker County. So that's, you think about the, the things it takes to make this all work and the technology that's evolved in the years that we've been watching it. It can only get better. And Sheriff, tell the, tell the folks out there that dispatch, thank you from all of us. Jason Bowen, would you and Mr. Zimmerman come up and introduce yourselves? Let everybody know that we might not have done too well in basketball, but we sure did a good job in agriculture.
It was a terrible week.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, Eric Zimmerman, Texas A&amp;M, our life and citizenship service. Glad to be here once again today to introduce our finalists. As you know, the Ag of Natural Resources County official position. Vacancies, Roy Thor retired in July of this past year. And we've identified Jason as Mr. Bowen as our finalists. Jason got a bachelor's degree from San Houston State University. He's a longtime teacher at Tarkman in the Independent School District for 16 years. And then, once he decided to move into extension work in February of last year, he's been serving as a 4H agent for the Cooperative Extension Program with Prairie V and M University. And so he's been doing that since February of last year, so about 14 months. And when Roy retired, I asked Jason to consider possibly moving into the Ag of Natural Resources position, being an individual tied to the production ag here in Liberty County, but also in extension work as well. And he entertained the thought. I twisted it a little bit further in terms of those arms. He applied. And so we were happy to have him as our finalist. You know, one of the things that's kind of nice is we had some vacancies in this extension office. And since we've had those vacancies, you know, a lot of times things kind of scale back a little bit. And since that time period, Jason picked up the slack along with Joanne and Kimberly on the extension side. And we're in terms of 4H enrollment, up 40. So we're pushing 300 kids again in the county, and this being, you know, a very critical component of our extension program as well. He's going to be charged with coordinating adult ag programs for local ag producers, but also being actively engaged with our 4H development program as well. And so we're happy to present him to you, Judge, Commissioners, as our finalist to that position.
Good deal. Well, welcome to Liberty County, since you already live here anyway. Yeah. Good to have you, bud. Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
I hope I can do anything for you.
Guarantee he will be put to work. You know, I've kind of watched it over the years and sometimes, you know, 4H and FFA, what was that Roger Miller song, 4H and FFA? It, watching how it goes down, comes back up, goes down, comes back up, it's kind of going back up now. It has, yeah. So that's good to see. Okay. Moving on along to item number five, public comment. Sarah Vickery, our friend from the Dayton City Council. Are you here? There you are. You're hiding behind Ricky? No, behind Jeff.
Right next to him.
Yeah, right next to Jeff.
Howdy, Judge.
Good morning.
Do you mind if I pass these out?
No, ma'am, not a bit.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Vickery. Judge already said that I am a member of Dayton City Council. That's not why I'm here today. So lucky y'all. I also volunteer with our friends at the library, at Jones Public Library in Dayton. I also volunteer for Meals on Wheels. I'm also the precinct 10 chair for the Liberty County Republican Party. None of that's why I'm here today. But I can't actually ask you for assistance if I can't show you that I am putting in work in our community. Today I'm coming to you as the president of the Liberty County Republican Women's Club. We have a wonderful opportunity that is going to have some lasting and positive impact on our young adults right here in Liberty County. It's the Liberty County Republican Women's Scholarship Fund. Last year we raised $3,500 and we gave away seven scholarships to graduating seniors in Liberty County. This year we're going to award up to six scholarships. One of those I am very proud of is going to be the Leon Wilson Memorial Scholarship. This scholarship is going to be awarded to one student. So we'll have one of the possible six scholarships. And that's going to go to a student who is going to be enrolled in a university to major in criminal justice, political science, or wildlife management. So also, if they're going to enroll in a police academy, they are also eligible for this scholarship. We just really wanted to honor one of our community's leaders with something dedicated to all the things that he really loved. So we can't do this without support from our community. So I would humbly ask you as individuals, not as a body, to help us to bless some incredibly deserving students right here in Liberty County. The more money we raise, the bigger those scholarships will be for those students. 100% of every donation is going to go to a deserving student. The club will keep none of them. We do the work for free because we love our communities and we value our children and their futures. 20% of all the funds that we raise will go to the Leon Wilson Memorial Scholarship. So if you are led, called, if you feel blessed in your situation right now, and you can donate, whether it's $5, $50, $500. Every dollar is going to make a difference to some student right here in Liberty County. And any support that you can give us would be greatly appreciated. Your packet has a donation form and also an application. Please feel free to copy that, share it with seniors who may want to apply. And my phone number is also on there. It's not a secret. If you have any questions, concerns, if you would like to join our club, yes, it's the women's club, but we would love to have you as a supporter in our club. I'm happy to answer questions if you need to call. And thank you for your time and your service to our communities. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a very fitting tribute to Leon. Thank y'all for stepping up. All righty. Next item up is declare conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts to declare at this time? Anybody? Everybody good? Okay. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Hope you all have had the opportunity to look over the consent agenda. Dwayne, do we have any add-ons today? Kim, how about you?
Thank you.
Wow.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion from Bruce, second from David, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion at this time? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the regular agenda, first item up from our Fire Marshal, Mr. Green, consider and approve a county-wide burn ban. Now, we know what's been going on in the county. And we know what we need to look at doing and be a little bit more cognitive of what's going on as far as fire conditions. But this is going to be, I'm going to call it a teaching moment, Sheriff. Because Mr. Green does have a pretty good idea about, now that he's been here, how many months have you been here now? About three?
Two.
Two? Well, that's, you jumped right in there, didn't you? Yeah, there you go. Anyway.
I've been through three rounds already, so.
Okay. But anyway, it, you know, when we sometimes call for a burn ban in the county, it's based on the KBDI, you know, the Keats Bar Drought Index. And it's when that number on that drought index gets up to around between 500 and 600, somewhere along the there.
600.
Yeah. 600 is our number. And when it hits there, there's no problem calling a burn ban. But when it's below there, here comes the teaching moment. So Nathan, if you would, give us a little bit of update here and where we're going with this.
Thank you, Judge. The, the KBDI reading for Liberty County is at or below 200 because of the rains that we've had. The rain yesterday morning did wash in the ground some more. What's, a lot of folks do not understand is it's not the ground that burns, it's the dead foliage on top of the ground that is the problem from the freezes and the cold weather we had during the winter. It hasn't gone away yet from maintenance. The conditions last week in San Jacinto County, the big fire was the result of a controlled burn that was not able to be controlled. It got out of hand. Their plan didn't quite take into effect. The winds that came in and actually drove the fire farther in different directions than what they had planned. The continued winds is what spread it almost into Montgomery County. I think it did dip in for just a little bit, but they got it under control. But the issue is the wind and spreading the fire across the dead vegetation on top of the ground and into the trees. So the Local Government Code, Chapter 352, that allows for a burn ban, has two stipulations. One is the KBDI that you mentioned. The other is special circumstances that, in the opinion of myself, convincing the judge, that conditions exist that controlling a wildfire becomes a bigger problem than a burn ban can be enacted to prevent that from becoming a problem. And that's where we are right now is with the winds that we've had and the winds that are possibly forecasted. The number of red flag days that are in the last week creates the problem that firefighters can't necessarily control it as easily as they could a house fire that is contained in one location. So the spread of the fire is the issue with the winds. So that's why the burn ban was presented to you. It can be enacted. It probably should be at least for more than 30 days to give the seasons a chance to settle and see what the weather's going to do after that. It can be terminated at any point if the danger has been determined to be non-existent. So enacting it at this point would not be a bad idea, just until we can get an idea of what the weather's going to do this year, this time of year.
And that's, that's including the rain that we had, the rain that is in the forecast, and the wind is basically.
The wind is the issue of spreading a fire that does get started. And it has been what has caused the big fires in the state of Texas over the last few weeks. Now, we're not as dry as West Texas, but the vegetation on top of the ground from the unnatural freeze and a little bit of snow that we got this year killed the vegetation. It is now dry and sitting on top of the ground. And that's what's burning, not the ground that's moist from the rains that we got yesterday and forecasted this week. So I did hand out to y'all, a little handout, just to give you an idea of what I'm working on for public education for Liberty County residents, so they're aware of when they can and can't burn, trying to get a public service announcement, some education material out to everybody in Liberty County, so that they understand a little bit what their rights are to be able to burn and what the responsibilities are if they choose to do so.
Can you share this with the, with the media, local media?
I will. I'm putting it in a little bit more formal format. This is just for y'all to have to refer to.
And, you know, maybe, put it maybe in layman's terms to where people understand it without all the technical difficulties of legalese, as Matthew would call it.
County, county district trying to understand all of it. I was trying to sort all of that out. Texas Municipal Environmental Quality does have a cheat sheet, for lack of a better term, online. And those websites are also part of the plan to get shared out so everybody can go read for themselves exactly what they can and can't do, and what happens if certain things take place if they decide to find it. I don't think folks realize that a reckless burn that gets out of, gets out of control and you can't put it out, you can be fined up to $250,000 as an individual. A business can be fined $500,000 per fire. So there's some stiff penalties involved. So I'm, you know, like I said, my goal right now, what I'm working on, is to get some education out to the public so that they know what their position, they can make a decision for themselves what they want to do.
Okay.
Within the laws.
All right. Well, I say the Titanic wouldn't have gone down if they knew what was ahead.
Correct.
Okay, so in this case, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to sign the burn ban, put a 30-day limit on it. And if the weather does change and the season settles down enough that the winds are going to be a little more predictable, then we can terminate at any point in time deemed that's appropriate.
Can we impose this for two weeks until the next court?
Sure.
Instead of 30 days?
We can do two weeks and then revisit it the next commission of county to extend it or terminate it.
Yeah.
Judge, I would also like to add, in order to effectuate this burn ban under statute, it requires that the Commissioners Court find on the record that circumstances present a public safety hazard in unincorporated areas of the county.
Can we approve that right now?
Yes, sir. With the weather the way it is and with dead vegetation on top of the ground, I believe so.
We approve this for a two-week period?
A second.
Have a motion from Greg.
With the, with the finding, there's got to be a finding there.
There's got to be what?
The finding that circumstances present a public safety hazard has to be a part of your motion.
Look what I meant, sir.
Perfect.
All right.
That's what I heard.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Motion from Bruce, second, motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate you. Yes, sir. If you have it, I don't know, do I have it? You, you got it. The new improved version. I'll catch you soon again. All right. Item number 82 from Mr. Brown over the Tax Assessor Collector's Office, consider and approve the overpay refund for account number 276131 to CoreLogic Tax Service in the amount of $4,851.46. Brother Rick?
Yes, sir. Have y'all heard me before? This is my VP of Commissioners, Corwicks, first time that we actually give money back when they paid it twice. And so basically someone paid it, the taxpayer paid it, and then this third party, CoreLogic, who sends us a lot of payments each year, because they'll collect from mortgage companies and banks and whatever, send us huge checks that cover several hundred accounts. So somehow in the mix-up, they sent in a payment after the taxpayer had already paid it. So it created, by statute, if it's over $2,500, we have to present it to Commissioners' Board. It gets approved by Commissioners' Board, by the county auditor, by my office, and then it becomes where we can actually issue the refund. So in this case, it's CoreLogic. And like you said, the amount is $4,851.46, and it will be going back to CoreLogic. Because whoever creates the refund is who gets it back. They fill out an application, send it to us. And so we presented to the court today recommending that you approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 83 from Ms. Harris over the County Treasurer's Office, consider the bank depository bid proposals and select a depository for either two years or four years, beginning on June 1st, 2025. Kim?
Yes, sir. So the court said that it would be okay to go out for bids for the bank depository. We received those back. We did all of the bids and received two of those back. And the two that we received back were from Prosperity Bank and Stellar Bank over in Dayton. And that Dayton branch with Stellar is the only one that Stellar has. So today I'm going to recommend that the court stick with Prosperity Bank. And Stellar Bank did provide us with a, with a very attractive bid proposal. And it appears as though they have a very strong governmental division. However, Prosperity has been a really good business partner for the county over the past decade and more. Marcia LaFleur is here representing Prosperity Bank. And Marcia is always available, always helpful, always very good. Prosperity Bank has not charged the county any fees. They don't charge us a positive pay service that we recently established with them. They don't charge us for all the big pile of checks that we send out every month. Their interest rate, Marcia and, and her team at Prosperity Their interest rate, Marcia and her team at Prosperity has agreed to allow us to use the money market account rate on all of our accounts. She wants to turn them off.
Yeah.
And what is that rate right now?
It is tiered, Bruce. There are seven tiers, and the rates go from 0.6% up to 3%. And on top of those rates, Prosperity is giving us a 0.25% addition to their posted tiers.
Tiered based on the amount of money?
It is. Yes, it is. And there would be no minimum balance required to get those money market rates.
Make a motion to accept Prosperity on a two-year term?
A motion from Bruce, second from David, to accept Prosperity on a two-year term beginning June 1st, 2025. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. And just to make the court and Marcia aware, during the bid process, each bank who bids is required to provide the county with a check for a good faith guarantee of their bid proposal. And both banks did provide that $381,000 check. And so because Prosperity Bank already has the collateral in place for the accounts that we have there, we will go ahead and return that check to Marcia, return it to Marcia today, along with the Stellar Bank back.
Not a bad deal, huh? Marcia, thank you for everything y'all do, really.
I know, appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, item number 84 from Ms. Chambers in County Clerk's Office, consider and approve the addition of two microphones and the repair replacement of a third microphone in Commissioners' Court meetings from BIS in the amount of $3,136.95 to be paid out of Commissioners' Court Records Management number 0474010131000. Lee?
Well, we need a couple of extra mics. We can't hear the pupil and the jury thing over the, you know, the recording. And sometimes we have issues over here as well. So fixing this one and getting some more mics will give us more area coverage in here. I was going to do it through my records management, but we have a hood that existed for a while back and it got discontinued by the legislature, but there's still some money in it. So do I recommend maybe we go ahead and pay it out of that fund since it is for the purpose of Commissioners' Court?
So this is for two mics? These are $1,500 apiece?
Repair one.
So they have to repair one and they have to come in and they have to sync them up with the other ones. So there is some service involved with them coming in and making sure that they all, you know, pick up the volume correctly. So it does include somebody coming in and fixing them.
I'm in with Bruce.
Got a motion from Greg, second from Bruce.
I'm in the wrong business.
Maybe you get one. Maybe you get one installed in your motor grader. Okay, got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 85, Mr. C. Well, Stephanie, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Consider and approve transfer of asset 4072, which is a 2018 motor grader from Roden Bridge Precinct 3 to Roden Bridge Precinct 2. What a deal. Okay? Pretty self-explanatory there. So you getting rid of one, David? And Greg's going to get it?
Yeah, we need it.
Okay.
They don't have any roads about they like.
Is it still running?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Number 86 from Mr. C., R. Stephanie, consider and approve transfer of asset 119, a 2010 Ford F-150 from the Office of Emergency Management to the Sheriff's Office.
That's actually asset number 1193.
1193, thank you. We'll make that correction. That's pretty self-explanatory, too. So Sheriff, you need another 150 over there?
We'll take anything we can get.
Motion from David.
Second.
Got a second from Gerald.
Oh, sorry.
I'm actually, I'm able to hear that's left here today. Doing pretty good. Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 87 from Stephanie, consider and approve the purchase of three new vehicles in the amount of $157,562.25 from Sewell Family of Companies through buy board contract number 724-23 for the Sheriff's Office. Okay? Motion from David, second from Greg.
I'm just about familiar with this buy board thing. I've seen it on a couple items and haven't asked what exactly this is.
Purchasing co-op, basically.
Okay, so Sewell has guaranteed us some kind of pricing structure?
Buy board went out to bid for vehicles and they awarded to the appropriate vendors that met specifications and had the lowest bid.
Okay.
So we need to like buy board a lot so we don't have to bid it out ourselves.
Sure. Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 88 from Stephanie, consider and approve a prepayment of $12,000 to Trinity Valley HVAC Services for air conditioning duct services, RFP number 2505, awarded by Commissioners' Court on February the 11th, 2025. So we're just going to pay them a prepayment to get started?
They've already started on some work there. When they bid, they said it would be three to four days to remove the old duct service work and get one to two weeks to get the metal and install it. When they came to start working, they were asked to stop and start scheduling maybe, I believe it's on Fridays, they're able to go in. So it's really pulling out the job for this vendor. So we're having to kind of work with him on far as prepayment so he can keep everything going and get the material.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 89 from Stephanie, consider and approve the workers' compensation renewal at 4/1/25, April 1st, '25, with Deep East Texas Self-Insurance Fund through Region 7 Education Service Center. You want to elaborate on that just a little bit, Stephanie?
Yes, sir. This is who we've been using for our workers' comp compensation insurance. They did give us an 8% decrease in rates this year. However, the premium is $4,000 more because our payroll went up.
Makes sense. Good.
So it's experience-based, the better we do on claims, the more they'll reduce the cost, although we've added employees or something apparently.
I'm not very well versed on this contract, Kim. Do you know the answer to that question?
That's right. What you said is accurate, among other things.
So that's, it's important that we have good safety systems built in to all our departments.
It certainly is, yes.
Keep this insurance as low as we can get.
Right. And let me just say, we do have a large number of workers' complaints. We do. We can have a review of that one day. It'll be a very good thing to do.
That would, I think that would be important to see.
Okay. What's the court?
Does we approve?
No, we, okay. I was just saying, we don't have a motion yet.
Hey, what's the value of this contract, though?
The premium that we will be paying this year, $491,383.
Okay, you have a motion from Greg looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 810 from Stephanie and from Commissioner Korbowski, consider and approve issuing a request for qualifications to assist Liberty County in preparing a scope of work for repairs at the jail.
I'm not very familiar with this. I believe.
It's just with our jail, we need someone to come in and tell us exactly what we need to do so that we can hire contractors, go out for bids for contractors to repair our old jail.
Matthew, any clarifications here?
No, I think this is a good idea. I think this is an answer to some of the problems we had when discussing it at the last session.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg.
I have a question, though. What kind of qualifications are you looking for? I mean, are there people that specialize in this kind of activity? I don't know.
Yes, sir. There's several companies that we would look at, look at to see who we wanted to for their qualifications.
Okay. Thanks on their qualifications, we select them to go in there and evaluate the damages and then list how we need to go out to bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 811 from Commissioner Arthur, consider and approve Halit Materials Commercial Development Site Plan and No-Rise Certificate at 1340 County Road 2117. What's that close to, Greg?
That's a pretty river.
Figured it would be.
About four, five miles south of the ride.
Okay. On the left, I mean.
On the left, yeah, goes back toward the river back there. They were, they submitted all their stuff and I'll make a move through.
Well, I'm looking at the letter from LJA and there seems to be a lot of discrepancies or something. Everything is not quite in order.
Well, they've got a professional engineering service that signs off on it. It meets all the federal requirements. Apparently, now we got another, I thought there was something going to talk about in the executive session, but.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't posted as such, so we have to.
All right. Now, you've got one professional engineer service says it does and one professional engineer says it doesn't. And you guys up there?
I can ask some comments.
Well, why don't you come up and tell us who you are so Ms. Chambers can get your name and who you're affiliated with?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners Carl Rassellson with Halit Materials. And Commissioners, to address that comment, some of those is regarding to the FEMA maps that were received. So we work with Westward Engineering and they're the ones that are doing our report. And the actual map of the LiDAR was 1,000 feet off. So when Westward was talking to FEMA, they said subtract 1,000 feet and that's what's causing the discrepancy. So they are having a meeting with LJA to go over some of those discrepancies in the reports, but the 2018 LiDAR is the most accurate.
We just completed a new LiDAR in the last six months.
Okay.
Okay. Have y'all checked it?
I have not, but I will let Westward know.
I appreciate we do that before we move too much further with this.
So should we table this book until we get the two engineering firms on the same page?
I know time limits for y'all are a big issue and for us as well, but.
The items on the deal, how do you address them?
The items between LJA and Westward?
Yeah.
It's simply a communication issue. And so that's where they're having a conversation here in the near future. You know, we had a conversation with them and there are sort of issues with the maps and they show, you know, certain ones.
I mean, I read this, there's a lot of, there's a lot of items on here I don't, I clearly do not understand, but.
I read all of them. I thought it was kind of superficial stuff.
And that's essentially exactly what they were saying. This is a lot of it is, they didn't understand how the calculations were done in LJA and so it's Westward's plan.
Any way we can get both parties in here to speak to us? If we don't have a letter from LJA that says, yeah, it's all fine and dandy, that's why we hired these guys.
Correct.
We've hired LJA for every engineering project that's happened in Liberty County, including the flood zone, to double-check everything. I don't bring it to Commissioners' Court until I have a letter of approval or no objection from LJA for anything that goes on in Liberty County. We still haven't completed our CAD from FEMA from the last time, and I do not want to ever go through one of those again because I don't want my name on any document that prohibits anything, anybody being able to get flood insurance in Liberty County. That's my main thing. I understand the standards need to make mine, but they're working right now without any permit. We all know that. So it's just, I understand it's my thing.
You're talking about a different situation.
And if I sign on this form without to say that LJA is free and clear, because they've done for every, we do for every subdivision that goes through, we depend on LJA.
Okay.
Every commercial thing that comes through, we depend on LJA.
Okay, the guy for LJA that does this checking, he does the ones.
The people that are the certified floodplain managers that work for LJA are the ones that do these documents.
And some of them, they do for people in the county.
I'm sorry?
In other words, the guy that does this, we're talking, I was blank for a minute.
Caleb?
Caleb, no, the other one.
Emmanuel?
Emmanuel, yeah.
On the no-rise certificate.
They do, they do some of these.
They can, yes.
And who checks theirs?
Nobody checks theirs. It's their seal on the no-rise certificate. But what happens is the individual who received it, if they do not follow with the no-rise states, then they're in violation. So the individual that got the no-rise certificate knows whatever says on the no-rise certificate, that that's what they're supposed to do. For instance, I have one in the county right now. The no-rise certificate said their house had to be 17 feet above ground, and they didn't want to do it that way. So they built it on two blocks, which is in violation. So right now, we have a stop work order because they're in violation of their no-rise certificate. So that's all I'm staying on. The floodline is very important because we've been in violation for so long and we're trying to get back in to the good side on FEMA.
How long has this Halit been? Have we been dealing with this company?
They just sent their H&amp;H study diploma and everything to LJA last week, Monday last week.
Within five weeks.
So they've only had it for two weeks.
We've got another one, the same situation, they've been dealing with for months.
Yeah, and I have one right now that's under FEMA review that's on the San Jacinto River because they built a 30-foot wall, which is their. So that's, I just need them to say that they have no objections to go further, but there is a whole list, there's a long list on there. So if we can get the two engineering companies together, see what's going on, that's perfect. I don't, I don't have any objection to that, but I don't want my name on anything until I get an okay from our engineer record.
We're supposed to have had a workshop on this and.
We've had one.
No, we haven't. In the last, since the last time we had problems with it, we hadn't had one and we need to have one. We've been talking, we're talking about this. We need to get something moving on this.
Well, that's scheduling workshops, no problem. Just get everybody to say, let's do it what day? All we have to do is let Dee Dee know and she can schedule that to get your engineers and our engineers that check the documents and then they support that document with a letter stating.
I don't have a problem with that. I like the idea of putting them both together and getting something worked out.
Well, I even brought FEMA to talk to you guys. We had it over in the old building because.
Yeah. Yeah, my main concern is I don't want this administration, us, to have any finger pointing at us if for some reason we had. pointing at us. It's for some reason, we had flood insurance for Liberty County canceled due to our practices. And I think we've tightened them up well enough to where they follow the proper protocol. But the same token, it does take time. I don't like that part of it because people are not, they're not working.
I know.
Yeah.
I understand. It's hard. I get that. But I'm not a certified floodplain manager, so I can't review this stuff. I have to depend on LJA.
And that's what we're paying for.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's what we're paying because we do not have one.
I'll make a motion that we table decide until we can come back.
We've already got a motion.
We have a motion, sorry?
I would throw my motion. I'll go with table.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
A motion from Greg and a second from Gerald. Gerald, okay. Got a motion from Gerald and a second from Bruce to table this. And Dee Dee, let's see if we can get together and get all the parties concerned, sit down and have a workshop. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number twelve is pretty much like calls. Consider and approve Harrington Aggregates Commercial Development Site Plan and No Rise Certificate at two two seven five three Highway one forty six north. And it's my understanding that the H and H has not been approved?
I have not received anything from LJA.
Okay.
And is this one, the permit process has taken so long?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, this one has. There's no doubt about that. Six months, probably.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm all for getting them their paperwork right and get them started.
I've got most of their studies over here. I don't know expert on either.
Same here. I'm not an expert. I just like to have all the paperwork.
But we're taking these conclusions.
With what our first one, the Halit Materials, I think we should table this one until after the workshop. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion from Gerald, second from Bruce to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So, motion carries. And we'll get this scheduled for a workshop as quickly as we can. Item number thirteen eight, or eight thirteen, rather, from Mr. Gott. Discuss, take action on the submission of draw number six to GLO by Grant Works for the housing buyout grant twenty dash zero six six dash zero one three dash C zero nine five in the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for reimbursable cost. Why do you got anything you want to add to that? Pretty much self-explanatory. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fourteen from Ms. Soliday over in Permits Inspections. Consider and approve Benado Lakes Section One Preliminary Platte. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Okay.
What precinct is that in?
That, it's off of three seventy-three. It's in precinct three. Okay. And the entire subdivision, when it's finished, will have the hundred and seventy-two single family lots.
Where's it located?
It's off of County Road three seven three.
Is that yours? Okay.
Yeah.
Benado?
Benado Lakes, yes.
It's deer in Spanish, okay.
This is the section one preliminary, and it has ninety lots.
They got deer out there, Dave?
I got deer.
Okay. That's why they call it Benado.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fifteen from Ms. Soliday. Don't sit down yet, Melinda.
Oh, no.
Consider and approve Benado Lakes Section One Construction Plans, Drainage Plans, and Final Platte. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Okay.
If you remember, this is the one that was going to originally have the pumps detention.
Yes.
But they revised all of their plans and everything go back to LJA for approval.
Grab your fifty.
And this is their final plan of the revised.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't count their mile hours to do today. They're supposed to be FedExing them to me, so I'll bring them to you individually.
Okay. Number eight sixteen from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Forest Lakes Subdivision, Section One Preliminary Platte. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Where is this one located?
This one says County Road three seventy-three in precinct three, but it's off of ten ten.
Listen, man. We need a few more subdivisions.
Yeah.
Brother, you got them. Okay.
This one's just off of ten ten.
Yes.
And it has, section one has a hundred and eleven single family lots.
Okay. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Number eight seventeen from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Forest Lakes Section Two Preliminary Platte. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Pretty self-explanatory.
Section two has a hundred and two single family lots.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. What type of product are they going to be constructing in these?
It is actually, I think I have a map on.
No, sticks and bricks or?
I believe it's sticks and bricks, yes, sir. And we haven't discussed anything else.
Is anybody here from Benado or Forest Lakes, rather?
Forest Lakes. I don't think so because they're out of town. But they have someone here. Yeah, I do know that it's Curbin Gutter Street.
Are you from Forest Lakes?
Yes, I'm their engineer.
Well, he's up here and visit with us in a minute.
That may be good.
Like to put a face with a name. Come up here and give Ms. Chambers your name again, please.
My name is Diego Espinoza. I'm with Texas Professional Engineering. Good morning. Texas Professional Engineering.
Okay. So, eighteen is where we're at now, okay. Considering and approve the Forest Lakes Section Three Pond, number two variance request attached in the packet. It's letter of no objection from LJA Engineering. So, we're going to build a pond, right?
Correct.
All right.
There's a map on the back of this.
What's the reason for the variance?
So, the current guidelines for the county are specifically written for a dry bottom pond, which is basically not a lake or, sorry, not a pond. It's just every time it rains, the water goes up and then empties. And it's, there's a cross loop in the bottom requirement along with a pilot channel that would help the water get out in an efficient manner. If you were to do a pond, that work is not necessarily, it's actually not needed. It doesn't provide a purpose anymore because all of that would be underwater.
Yeah.
Right? And then a pond is obviously aesthetically a lot more pleasant to look at. It also serves as sedimentation basin. So, basically, there's sediment or soap that goes in there. It helps the water filter that out before it goes out. So, it fits with the type of community that we're trying to build. And again, it's just necessarily, the reason for the variance request is because the current guidelines don't necessarily have stipulations for it on.
Kind of like a pre-Venatch Weir.
Correct. Yeah. So, if we were to follow the regulations, all of that would be underwater and have absolutely no purpose.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And item number eight nineteen from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Forest Lakes Section Three Preliminary Platte. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Curious, what type of homes are we looking at building in here?
It's, yeah, sticks and bricks. The major builders, single family detached homes.
You guys, builders picked out already or you going to be?
There is a negotiations on the builders. I don't know necessarily that I am allowed to release that information just yet because contracts are being negotiated, but they are nationwide reputable builders.
Minimum square footage?
We've got the square footage. It's going to be around fourteen hundred square feet.
Okay. Improvements, setbacks?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, we have twenty-five foot setbacks, just like the county requires.
Okay. What about your driveway?
That would be the standard driveway that the builder is doing.
Concrete?
Correct, concrete.
Good. Okay, we're getting there. How about, this going to be open ditches?
No.
Good. You like that, Bruce?
Yep.
All right. David should. Okay. All right. What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
This law, this section has sixty-nine single family lots.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion or questions?
I think it's going to be around twelve hundred houses in there.
Just shy of thirteen hundred. And we're not municipal utility districts.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting you too. Thank you for coming in. Item number eight twenty from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve Progress Payment Number One. Schaumburg and Polk for sanitary sewer improvements using ARPA funds, the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. All backup is in the packet with Mayor Domain's signature. Did we get that squared away? Do we just need her signature, Matthew, or we need the entire council's signature along with hers?
This council has to approve that.
Right.
And then the mayor.
I know.
Do we have those approvals, though, is what, because Ms. Domain continues to sign these, is city council approving them also?
I won't bring them to you without a signature from the mayor.
But whose signature?
But we know. I think the question is, do we also know if that's signature based on council action? Well, I can find it out.
Yeah.
Hey, I do have a question. This is like the third meeting I've sat in where we had these type of funds and these transfers. So, is the county just a repository for these ARPA funds and then send them to the city?
It's given to us. The Commissioners' Court discretion, I don't understand. There's guidelines on things that can't be spent on.
Okay.
It's actually, we're responsible for it. It's our money.
And we're audited for it. And we're audited for it.
Okay. Yeah. That was the only question I had.
So, Matthew, what, should we, I mean, should we wait on a signature? Should we check on if city council has approved this or?
Let me check on whether city council has approved it.
I had Mayor Domain's signature on it. I just don't.
I'd kind of like to see the minutes, really.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce to table, second from David. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. When we do the same thing with Hardin, Hardin City Council, we get the report with them.
Yeah. Number twenty-one, eight twenty-one is basically the same thing. Approved Progress Report, Schaumburg and Polk also for ninety-six thousand eight oh seven, hold it back to some packet with Mayor Domain's signature. What say the court and Ms. Cause?
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-two from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve a payment invoice number one two nine zero one dot zero zero dash one nine. Schaumburg and Polk for the same sanitary sewer improvements using ARPA funds in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars attached as a packet. In the packet is invoiced by Mayor Domain. Again.
Make a motion to table.
Okay. Got a motion table by Bruce, second from Greg. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-three from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve LJA Engineering Invoice Number two oh two four three zero seven four one and invoice two oh two four five one zero two nine, maybe combined amount of nineteen thousand thirty-one dollars and nine cents for wastewater engineering services for the city of Hardin using ARPA funds.
I put Mayor Domain's name on it. I'm sorry. It's my.
Her name's not on this one. Do we have Harden's?
I have the signature, but are you looking for them to send me the minutes?
I'm looking for city council to approve what this is.
That's fine. I mean, I can get that.
Yeah.
Last time, we had something from Harden, that their city council did approve it.
Yeah.
Yes. I haven't included the minutes prior, so I.
But they did on this.
What this does, it just proves those things.
They've seen.
So, Harden. So, we don't need to table this one?
No, it does have.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, Harden normally sends their signatures by all the council as well. Okay. So, you got a motion to approve from Bruce? Second from David. Got that? Second from Greg?
Greg, second.
Okay. Sorry, Dave. You got the box. Okay. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-four from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve a letter of approval to use advanced drainage system polypropylene in Liberty County drainage and construction projects. Let's visit on this in a minute. Okay?
Okay.
All right. What you want me to do?
They are just wanting a letter of approval to be able to use their products in Liberty County.
Who is they?
The company. And the ADS, that's why I included all this stuff, you know. Apparently, he and Mr. Douglas spoke when Mr. Douglas was in office and he had given them a letter. But I felt it necessary to come and ask him before I signed any type of letter. Apparently, it's been well studied before using it. It looks like a good product, but I'm not an engineer, so I can tell you.
Is this something we could send to LJA to let them check into?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because the letter that she had was like six years old. And I was wondering why we just now.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Looking at this.
I'll make a motion to table this.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to table.
And we're also looking for LJA to review.
Yeah, in my motion to table, I also would like us to have our permitting department reach out to LJA for a little bit more clarity on this.
All right. Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. So, motion carries. Number eight, thank you, Melinda. Number eight twenty-five. From our fire marshal. Boy, this is going to be one of those like, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Andy, why don't you ease up here and let's talk about considering and freely authorizing San Jacinto Day fireworks sales beginning April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and ending at midnight, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. So, we have a burn ban and now we're going to see if we can approve fireworks.
But the burn ban was only for two weeks, not three days.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the burn ban carries over, past the date you have to approve fireworks.
Correct.
So, we approve this using the Jim Wilson rule, correct?
Yeah.
Sticks and fins, no?
Correct. It's like the last one. We had the last fireworks season in the Shoreline. We did not have any incidents reported fireworks related.
Okay. Now, what if we have a burn ban, then we can't sell fireworks, right? We'd have to go back and revisit this?
Correct.
Is that clear? Everybody good? So, what say the court?
Makes a motion to approve excluding sticks and fins, as long as we're not underneath the burn ban.
There you go, buddy. All right. Got a motion, a clear motion from Bruce. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Andy. Number eight twenty-six from Mr. Poston and Ms. McCarty over in the county attorney's office. Consider and take potential action regarding the termination of master contract for architectural services with Burns Architecture. We want to move this into executive session, correct?
That's right.
Number twenty-seven. Number twenty-seven. That's also stated in executive session as well, and then also.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to pass on item number twenty-seven. I've spoken with our outside counsel for Arkham, who's representing us against Arkema. They don't have anything they need to discuss today, so I would ask the court to take no action.
Okay.
On which, what items?
Twenty-seven.
Make a motion to take no action.
Got a motion from Bruce and second from David to take no action on item number twenty-seven, so it won't go to executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. And number twenty-eight, that's concerning a non-disclosure agreement. That's also listed in executive session.
Actually, it's not.
It's, it is not, that's correct.
Oh, I see it, okay. Yeah, that's incentives, yeah. Okay.
I would ask the court to pass this, so that.
Yeah.
We can receive their application formally and deliberate.
Okay. So, item number twenty-eight, consider and approve a non-disclosure agreement concerning certain trade secrets and other confidential information given to Liberty County while deliberating the offer or economic development incentives to Project Wire to locate within the Gulf Inland Logistics Park. And so, we are asking for approval of this.
That's right.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, you're approving it or taking no?
No.
I'm approving it.
Motion to approve from Bruce.
Yeah.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Now, number twenty-nine, that is executive session.
That's right.
Okay. All right, and, uh.
Thirty.
Number thirty is probably not going to be an executive session item, so y'all want to go ahead and do that one now? Let's get that knocked out of the way, okay? Eight thirty is considered and approved resolution of the Liberty County Commissioners Court in opposition to House Bill twenty-nine eighty-nine and Senate Bill seventeen forty-five is filed in the Texas Legislature. This concerns Liberty, or the Chambers Liberty County Navigation District, the Cedarport Improvement District, I believe is what it is. There's just some back and forth action going on. And since we didn't really receive this notification of these bills being filed until the last second, it has me a little bit concerned. Brady, you're here with the Navigation District, and you want to come up and give us a little bit of insight here, if you would, please? And Lee, you know Brady's answer.
Add to this, we've been in, actually, these two House bills have, the House bill and the Senate bill have popped us up on us, like, like Judge Knight said, very much last minute. We've been in negotiations for, I don't know, since twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
With the Cedarport Navigation District over a potential terminal, you know, starting, and the project scope has moved a lot. We haven't been able to get anywhere. We've actually been waiting on those guys to approve our, the final term sheet. I mean, we took first whack at the, at the deal with our attorneys, and they, they passed it back to us two or three times, and it's just been radio silent. And the next thing we hear about is this House and Senate bill, and the largest concern we have is these guys potentially using eminent domain powers, and the fact that they absolutely would not take that off the table with two public entities in eminent domain. Because the backstory on that is since the nineteen forty-four, I think, the Liberty Chambers County Navigation District was formed, all the submerged lands in East Bay and Trinity Bay belonged to the district. The district on the Cedarport deal, it is actually just the Cedar Bio inlet, but we still control stuff inside of that as well, down Cedar Bio, but they've got their own deal that pertains to all of the TGS activities. The, we would ask that you guys approve this resolution against these bills in their current form. We actually are going to Austin to do the same thing tomorrow, there's Senate hearing, and hopefully, we can get these things, these things delayed, because there's a whole lot of stuff that's not real clear, and they're not wanting to make real clear to us. And the fact that these bills were sponsored, both of them, by, by a senator and a, and a representative out of district is real alarming as well.
Imagine that.
They were, we had a, I think there was a local representation jumped on as cosponsors on both of them at the very last minute, last Monday or Tuesday, but we've all been working pretty diligently. We tried to strike a deal yesterday. Judge Knight was there with us. Both judges were there. I think we spent five hours.
Yep.
In, in a conference room with, with the, in Chambers County, in the judge's conference room, and, you know, kind of thought we might get a deal, set up some great terms, and they didn't seem to want to approve it. So, it's at the point that we really need to get the county on our side to oppose this legislation, at least in its, in the current form that it, that it sits.
So, there are other navigation districts in?
Well, these guys, actually, you said it right in the beginning, it was the Cedarport Improvement District. And the best we can figure is that the navigation district piece of it, they changed their name to a navigation district. You know, it was, it was just a tip like any other improvement district. I think it changed its name to navigation district at some point, which there's no law to do that. And I think they filed these bills, but they're excluding certain pieces of the water code that the rest of us have to abide by. And I think the biggest thing is the lease on the dock space is ours. That's all submerged lands under us, and as well as all of the dredge material and the disposal, the disposal of the spoil, as well as the dredging itself. And we can't get any, we've gone anywhere from eight million dollars to GLO rates is really what we're asking for, and I think that they wouldn't agree to an eighteen percent discount on GLO rates either. And, you know, we're kind of under some scrutiny as well from the state, and when they gave, when we had the property, we bought the property from the state in the fifties, we've got a reversionary clause that, that we can't really give that land to anybody. It has to go back to the state. So, it's, it's pretty sticky, and it certainly needs to be cleaned up, and there's, there's easier ways to fix this than.
So, do you think that's what they fly these bills?
They're trying to slip around some stuff that we can't figure out. I mean, it's, the guys have been, I mean, we surely hope that everyone's working in good faith. We just haven't been able to get anything done on the deal, and we've got a timeline we've put together, and it's crazy the amount of time and money that's been spent and energy to try to get something done on this. We want it to happen. It's a good thing for Liberty and Chambers County both. It's just coming to agreement that, and protecting that district and Liberty and Chambers County Navigation District is what we're there for. So, thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Now, item of the executive session, we need a motion and a second to move it into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. It is now ten twenty-four. Eleven seventeen, eleven eighteen, back in regular session, and items of the executive session, we're ready to move forward and see what we can build on what the, what's the pleasure is at this time. Item number one was pursuant to Section five hundred one point zero seven two five, case of government code contracts being negotiated regarding termination master contract for architectural services with Burns Architecture. Lee, I think we came up with a proper.
It's agenda item number eight point two six.
Yeah.
The recommended motion is a motion to authorize the county attorney to renegotiate terms and conditions in the master contract for architectural services with Burns Architecture and remove jail repairs consultation services for the current jail from being covered by that master contract.
I make that motion.
Okay. Got a motion from Bruce, second David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Now, Matthew, should we go back and amend?
Do ten.
Number ten of this.
That's correct. I recommend we, we address that.
Number ten, flip it back over here, did. Was, consider and approve issuing a request of qualifications to assist Liberty County preparing a scope of work for repairs at the jail. We need to.
Ms. Chambers, you phrase that.